Good morning. Welcome to the first ordinary council meeting, Ipswich City Council on the 27th of January 2022. The time is nine o'clock. I'll call it attendance. I can see that everyone is in attend—oh, sorry, my apologies. I can see that councillor Ireland, councillor Tully, councillor Doyle, councillor Fittner, councillor Millian, councillor Kunsman are here. And councillor Johnic, you're on teams. Thank you. And I can see councillor Madsen has returned to the chamber, so I'll count that everyone is present. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to acknowledgement of country. And councillor Fittner, would you like to do the acknowledgement?
Yeah, thank you. January 26 marks Invasion Day, otherwise known as Survival Day, Day of Mourning, when Captain Arthur Philip and 1,500 convicts, crew members and civilians claimed the land and raised the British flag for the first time at Sydney Cove in 1788. In the 10 years that followed, it is estimated that Australia lost 90% of its indigenous population, the world's oldest living culture dating back 60,000 years, due to genocide, epidemic disease and settler acquisition. January 26 is still formally recognised by the Australian Government as Australia Day. This has always been—this has not always been the case though, and the date has been changed before. Before 1888, Anniversary Day was held on January 26 in New South Wales only, while other states had their own celebrations. The first ever official national day named Australia Day was on July 30 in 1915. In 1916, it was changed to July 28. Commonwealth and state governments didn't agree to formally celebrate as a nation until 1946. Australia Day has only been recognised as an official public holiday nationwide since 1994, less than 30 years ago. 150 years after Invasion Day, 1938, indigenous men were forced to perform the role of retreating Aboriginals in a reenactment of the First Fleet. They were told if they refused, their families would starve. The men were forcibly taken to Menindee and locked up at the Redfern Police Barracks in the weeks leading up to the reenactment, so they could not be influenced by the Sydney protesters. A hundred Aboriginal protested gathered in Sydney to present a different view of the celebrations, a day of mourning, highlighting the loss of life, land, language due to the European occupation. These protests continue today. In 2017 and 2018, a nationally representative sample of around 1,500 Australians was polled to ask about their knowledge and attitudes towards Australia Day. This included only 38% that could accurately identify January 26 as the day that the First Fleet claimed Sydney Cove. Over three-quarters, 77%, inaccurately said that Australia Day had always been on January 26. January 26 is a celebration of genocide and colonialism and the ongoing systemic oppression faced by Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people. Abolishing January 26 as a day of celebration is not a matter of public opinion. It is something that needs to happen in order for our First Nations people to mourn the loss of their family, culture and land. So in that, Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the lands and waters we share. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging, as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of a proud people. The land was never ceded, it will always be and always has been Aboriginal land. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Fittner for your personal acknowledgement of the country. There, I'll now move on to the opening prayer. Councillor Tully?
Thank you, ma'am. Heavenly Father, we seek you to be with us in this meeting today. Assist us to be an example to others, bringing strength and encouragement in whatever we do and equip us for the ongoing challenges as they arise. Give the guidance to continue to make wise decisions for both the short and long term benefit of our city and our community, regardless however difficult and unpopular some will be. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much councillor Tully. Apologies and leave of absence, I have none. Number five on the agenda is condolences, I have none. Number six is tributes, and I'd like to provide a tribute to Elizabeth Jordan's 110th birthday. A couple of weeks ago, I had the great honour—Ipswich had the great honour of Elizabeth Jordan, our oldest resident to mark her 110th birthday. Born in 1912, she is believed to be the seventh oldest person in the country, and remarkably lived in an Ebbevale home from 1936 until very recently. She was raised in Ipswich West, leaving school at 14 to help the family home, as was the practice at the time. She married husband Joseph in her early twenties and they had two children, Peter and Valerie. Husband Joseph was a coal miner, while Elizabeth looked after the home, cultivating a bursting garden filled with veggies, flowers, plants and orchids while making cakes and jams. When Joseph was forced to retire from work due to illness, Elizabeth became his dedicated nurse for 40 years, supporting the family through dressmaking. A dedicated member of Dinmore Methodist Church and a life member of Ipswich Blue Care Service, Elizabeth has kept herself busy over the years, playing the organ at church and enjoying indoor bowls. Described by her family as fiercely independent, she has been kept busy with social outings and regular church until COVID-19 restrictions made life a little more isolated. During her lifetime spanning two centuries, Mrs. Jordan has witnessed two world wars, two global pandemics, 25 Australian Prime Ministers—from Andrew Fisher to Scott Morrison, 21 Queensland Premiers —from Digby Denham to Anastasia Palache, and four kings and queens of Great Britain going back to George V. Sadly, her husband Joseph passed away in 1996. Elizabeth's two children, five grandchildren, nine great-grandchildren, continue to spend time with her where possible and chat on the phone and video call to keep her company. The last time I had a chat with Mrs. Jordan was at the opening of the Ipswich show last year, and she spoke at the opening there because she has entered in that show, I think, every year since she was 15. And before I gave my speech to open, she leaned across to me and she said, please keep it short. And I could tell you now, I followed her instructions to the letter. I welcomed everyone to the show and sat back down. So on behalf of the City of Ipswich, I wish Mrs. Jordan many happy returns for her 110th birthday. Thank you. I move that tribute. Do I have a seconda? Thank you councillor Doyle. All those in favour? Thank you, it's unanimous. I'll just check with the deputy mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. I now move on to presentations or petitions, and there are none. Eight is presentations, deputations, there are none. Public participation, there are none. We now move on to a new item that we included in our meeting procedures last year, which is the matters of public interest. And councillor Kunsman's put in a notice for a matter of public interest on Citizen of the Year. I hand over to you now councillor Kunsman.
Thank you, ma'am. I take great pleasure in presenting the first matter of public interest. This addition to the agenda being approved by council in December 21. Last week, council continued its fine tradition, the Australia Day awards. The basis of the awards is acknowledgement of the contribution of individuals and organisations to the City of Ipswich. I congratulate all nominees on their participation in our community and, of course, the winners. Most of this activity is built on volunteering. I wish to recognise all those in our community who were not nominated but continue to contribute to and improve our community. Just because your name was not up there in lights does not mean that you are not appreciated. The range of activity in our community is outstanding and vital for our wellbeing. There are 152 languages spoken in our local government area, but the common language is the language of service. Volunteering may be taken for granted until it is not there. COVID has meant that many organisations are disadvantaged by the way volunteers have been forced into isolation. This has increased the burden on service providers and agency. In addition, the sector struggles with the lack of new members, by which I mean young people, and burnout anecdotally is becoming more prevalent. Council encourages and supports community organisations and those who carry on for extended periods to improve our wellbeing. The connectedness of community volunteer is meaningful, and I encourage more residents to participate.
Thank you councillor Kunsman. I assume that you move that that MPI is noted? Councillor Kunsman?
Sorry?
Do you move that your MPI is noted?
I move that it's noted.
Do I have a seconda? Thank you councillor Fittner. I'll put it to the floor. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Deputy mayor?
I vote in favour.
Thank you. That's unanimous, and it's noted. Thank you. There's a second matter of public interest that I'd like to put forward, and that is on the Tonga emergency response. Here's great status, I send the thoughts of our city to the Tongan community, following the recent eruption and tsunami that have devastated the country. The eruption of Honga, Tonga, Honga-Hapai on the 15th of January has left many in Tonga, and many in our community deeply concerned for the welfare of family and loved ones. Reports from the Government of Tonga indicate that 85% of the country's population has been directly affected by either the immediate effects of the volcanic eruption or the resulting tsunami. Combined these events have spread volcanic ash over crops, towns and water supplies, and damaged homes and vital infrastructure, and led to the loss of food and medical supplies. This is a devastating event for our brothers and sisters in Tonga, and one I know many in our Tongan community were feeling very deeply about these events. The Tongan High Commission in Canberra has said in a statement that Tonga and its people have been brought to its knees, but have vowed not to let this devastating event break their spirit. On behalf of the City of Ipswich, I want to let our Tongan community know that they are in our thoughts at this time, and we wish for good outcomes for everyone still waiting on news from family in Tonga. Also, I want to thank our local defence members in our city and their families for their immediate response to help our neighbours. Crews from Raff Base Ambly responded within hours, providing aerial imaging support to assess the degree and extent of the damage, and C17 crews were the first to land in Tonga, bringing emergency aid and response support, with logistics operations continuing out of Raff Base Ambly and other locations around the country. I also note that HMA Adelaide is en route to Tonga, full of supplies, equipment and defence personnel to assist. At this time of the year, we all want to spend as much time with family as possible, and I want to acknowledge the defence families who continue to be part of our national response to support our neighbours in their hour of need. The Department of Foreign Affairs and Trade has established a hotline for information on Australian citizens and permanent residents in Tonga on 1300 555 135. We wish the people of Tonga the very best and want them to know that they are in our thoughts at this very challenging time. I move that that matter of public interest be noted. Do I have a seconda? Thank you councillor Kunsman. I'll put it to the floor. Those in favour? Deputy mayor?
Affirmative.
Thank you. That's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We now move on to item 11, which is the declarations of interest on matters on the agenda. Thank you councillor Fittner.
In accordance with section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act of—
2009, I councillor Andrew Fittner informed the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in items numbers 16.11 and 16.22. The nature of my declarable conflict of interest, my business interests in both A1A Proprietary Limited and Bahaizenberg Proprietary Limited, both located in the top of town in Ipswich, I plan on dealing with this conflict by leaving the road while the matter is discussed and voted on. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Open disclosure, councillor Fittner. Are there any other disclosures? Yes, councillor Madsen?
In accordance with section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act 2009, I councillor Jacob Madsen informed the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in items 16.11 and 16.12. The nature of the declarable conflict of interest is, I'm on the executive of the Ipswich Trades Hall and Labour Day Committee, and our building in the Ipswich Trades Hall is adjacent to the Ipswich CBD redevelopment and Nicholas Street. I will leave the meeting room while the matter is considered and voted on. And I'd like to make another one this morning. Mayor, if I may, on item 16.5, the development application recommendation change request for material change of use at 102 Champions Way, Willowbank. A close personal friend of mine is on the executive of the Junior Speedway Club, and this has been put on the same lot as them. I'm not aware of any issues, but— I'm not aware of any issues, but due to that, I invite the other councillors to determine if I can continue to participate in the decision process. Happy to answer any questions, as obviously.
I guess my question is, what is the nature of the friendship and how close is it, I guess is probably the main?
It's just a friend of mine that I see regularly, you know, hang out with. They're on the executive of that group, they're a not-for-profit group.
Do you think it'll impact your ability to be impartial?
I don't believe so. I don't, I don't think there's any issue between anyone occurring with it, but I wanted it on the public record.
Thank you. Yes, councillor Tully?
I'm happy to move that councillor Madsen participate and votes on that item because there is no personal or financial benefit to the council, and therefore a reasonable person would trust that the final decision is made in the public interest.
Yes, thank you. Seconda, I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. Deputy mayor? Thank you. So, so thank you very much, councillor Madsen. You stay in the room. I appreciate your openness and transparency in disclosing that. Are there any other declarations of interest in matters on the agenda? Deputy mayor, is there anything?
No.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item 12.1, which is the confirmation of minutes. I think councillor Tully, you had a minor
Oh, yes.
amendment to provide?
Yeah, it's a minor amendment on page 21 of 326 from the last meeting, under the heading foreshadowed motion. This is more a typo or an English language version that I'll propose or move that the word alternate be replaced with the word alternative, as in the alternative motion.
To change it to alternative, did you say?
Alternative, yeah. And I have advised the committee clerk earlier.
Now, thank you for advising the committee clerk beforehand. So you're moving that amendment?
Yes.
Yep, I'll second that. I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour? Thank you. Councillor, deputy mayor, everyone has voted in favour here? Thank you. So that's the amendment going forward. I'll now move, I guess, the original motion, that the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 9th of December 2021 be confirmed. Do I have a seconda for that? Thank you, councillor Fechner. I'll put it to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Everyone has their hands raised here. Deputy mayor?
I voted in favour.
Thank you very much. We now move on to item 30, which is for merrill minute. Now, I do not have a merrill minute, but councillor Kunsman has a matter of urgency, in which she emailed all the councillors on Saturday about, so I will hand over to councillor Kunsman to move a matter of urgency.
Thank you, mayor. I have an urgent matter to bring to the attention of council, excuse me, and seek the permission of the meeting to raise this matter. I move that the meeting provide permission for this matter of community concern to be heard under section 8.3.2 of the meeting procedures policy.
Thank you. Do I have a seconda for that? Councillor Milligan? Thank you. Any discussion? No, I'll put that matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Everyone in the room has their hand up. Deputy mayor, how do you vote? Thank you, that's unanimous. Please proceed, councillor Kunsman.
The motion is as follows. The council undertake a community forum for residents of Chua and surrounding suburbs so residents, council and local business operators can better understand the planning approvals and conditions in place, the regulatory mechanisms the council can use to manage impact to residents, the impacts that business nuisances such as noise and dust are having on the local community, the community's expectations of its neighbours regarding the impact these activities are having on neighbourhood amenity, and that the meeting will be organised, advertised to the community and held before the end of February 2022 at a venue that allows sufficient in-person attendance in a Covid-safe manner.
Thank you. So you're moving those motions? Do I have a seconda for that? Councillor Milligan, thank you very much. I now open it up for discussion. I think, did you wish to speak to that?
I do.
Councillor Kunsman? Oh, sorry, yep.
Just before you do, sorry councillor Kunsman, and through you, mayor. In the opening to this, should we point particularly to why the community forum will be held? It's not explicit in the opening there, that council undertake a community forum for residents of Chua, but I guess why isn't really explicit in the opening there, so if someone might want to propose Chua in addition in there?
I think it's... So I think councillor, I'd like to keep things a little bit informal, but councillor Milligan, did you wish you had your hand up? And you're the divisional councillor. Did you have something to add there?
Thank you, mayor. Yes, I, in reading and through numerous times, and I do apologise, and with all due respect, I haven't come up with any alternate wordage as such, but I did notice that it doesn't actually state the site or what it is that is causing this impact. And so specifically, what will this forum or meeting be addressing, other than the impacts, some of the impacts listed there?
So, is someone got an amendment to suggest? Otherwise, I'll happy to suggest that that motion A could have plenty of approvals and conditions in place for 62 Coal Road, Chua. Would that be sufficient?
I'm not the mover or the seconda, but yeah, I think that we need something to clarify because this is what's going to be committed to the minutes, and it needs to be explicit.
I agree to that amendment. It just demonstrates how close to it I am, I guess, that I didn't pick that up. And I thank councillor Fechner.
And I guess just checking with the seconda, councillor Milligan, are you okay with that? Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much, councillor. Sorry?
Sorry, if I'm interjecting.
Now, we're now at the situation, now our councillor Kunsman gets to speak to the motion. If we could hand over to councillor Kunsman?
Thank you, mayor. Councillors, as I have advised previously, residents of Chua are subjected to intolerable noise and dust disturbance every week from the activities of the tenant at this site, which is a commercial motorcycling facility. The times and extents of activity are also issues. Chua is a quiet, leathy suburb. Residents have chosen to live here in a large lot development for the peace and quiet that comes with semi-rural living. Apart from frequent consultation with a representative group of residents, council's response has been to provide information via Shape Your Ipswich that outlines the history of the site, the original permission to develop, and emphasises that the landowner and the tenant have a legitimate business operation. In addition, council has issued an environmental protection order. I feel that council's response should also include the calling of a public meeting. I believe that such a community meeting will fulfil the following purposes. Residents will be better informed as to the provisions under which the facility operates. While council has been consulting with a representative group of affected residents, a public meeting will give a better understanding of how many people are actually affected. When residents get to express their views, councillors fulfil our obligation and our sincere desire to listen to the community. The impacts of the activity will be acknowledged. The motorcycling facility operators get to hear residents. Council reiterates what is possible in response to residents' concern, and we get the reinforcement of a transparent process. It is established that the facility has been there a long time. I have heard it said that residents chose to settle in this area, knowing that there was a motorcycling facility in the area, and that therefore they should put up with it. That opinion has not come from council officers, of course. The key is the degree of change in the activity from an occasional meeting to an every weekend commercial operation. An analogy might be the decision of Brisbane residents and flight paths. They might have decided I can live in suburb X because I am prepared to live with this amount of noise. With the new runway, different people find themselves under a flight path. The difference again is the degree of change in activity. The change in activity at Chua has significantly impacted residents over and above what would be considered reasonable. I believe it's in our community's interests to ask the landowners and tenants at the motorcycle track to attend a community forum to understand the impact that their operation is having on their neighbours and the community's legitimate concerns for the impact on their amenity. Council also has a part to play in this story to explain to residents what our role is and the limitations on actions we can and can't undertake. But there is also a role for the tenant and business operator to understand the social responsibilities to manage the significant impact on their neighbours. Holding an open forum where the community can listen, ask questions and understand is the first step in working together to solve these issues. I thank my fellow councillors for your consideration and understanding in this matter and for your support of the residents of Chua and surrounding suburbs.
Thank you, councillor Kunsman. I'll open it up for discussion, I think, as the divisional councillor, councillor Milligan was wanting to speak to it.
Thank you, mayor. In commencing, I absolutely expressed my unified support with my divisional colleague with respect to supporting our residents through a time where they are experiencing extreme hardship. Having said that, I have, I have hold reserved view, personal view with regards to how this concept will be undertaken and where the role, the true role of local government stands in the matter. Absolutely deep desire to support and assist residents, but I am cautious as to overstepping any line. And I think that perhaps we may need to take some advice as to how to conduct that. In terms of a community forum, my understanding by definition, a forum is a a meeting where the two-way conversation and ideas are expressed. Who on behalf of council will be in attendance? I'm just, with regards to the wordage of the motion, and I again apologise that I haven't come up with any alternative wordage, so I'm not pointing a finger, absolutely not, but I am concerned that how this would be undertaken. It's the role of elected representatives to engage with residents. In terms of the organisation, providing information, I believe we have that already via Shape Your Ipswich in terms of what are facts and the dispelling of misinformation. So I would encourage, if with your indulgence, Chair, that we discuss this openly in this forum, if that's okay.
Thank you. And I think councillor Ollin had her hand up after that.
Thank you, mayor. I think that I may have with these rules. I owned a house on Broadwick Road just under Carl Road 20 years ago, so I'm just declaring that I'm aware of the issues. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. I think councillor Doyle, you had your hand up?
Thank you, mayor. And councillor Milligan's probably now spoken to my question or concern, and I want to say at the outset, I am very in favour of and supportive of consulting with the community, but I do question the need for a formal community forum, which will take up a lot of council resources in arranging. You know, informal forums can take place. It's something councillor Fechner and I have done several times. And that is meeting with large groups of residents to field their questions and concerns. On occasion, we will have a council officer in tow, and then we provide that feedback through to council officers. And I do worry, I guess, is there the suggestion that we can somehow influence an outcome here? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I guess, I strongly support this, and I take on board the comments from councillor Milligan and councillor Doyle, there've been certainly councillor Kunsman in particular, and myself have had many informal meetings, been out there and chatted with residents at six in the morning when we can hear the trucks go, and later on when the motorbikes are going. I'll be strongly supporting this motion. And whilst it was, we'll take council resources, which is why it's coming to this meeting for that, for this open discussion. I guess we're in a situation where a lot of things need to come out the table. We've done the Shape Your Ipswich page, which addresses a lot of the information there. Look, I want to acknowledge the fact that the landowner and tenant have a legitimate business operation. I think that's pretty clear to say. But I've got to say that since the new motorbike track tenant has commenced operations, residents have reported many impacts on their residential amenity for noise, dust and the hours of operation. Also acknowledge that the council met with the landowner prior to the resumption of that operation at the track. However, at that meeting with the tenant and the landowner, the council strongly advised the, you know, both to conduct community consultation, you know, with the local residents to understand the impacts their operation may have on their neighbours. And it's quite clear that this request and advice hasn't been followed. And subsequent requests from us and the staff to engage in dialogue with the community have been rebuffed as well. Clearly, the situation that's occurring in Chua, the impact of the resumed operations at the motorcycle park has significantly impacted the local residents, and councillor Kunsman and I have heard that ourselves as well, over and above what we consider reasonable. I do believe it's in our community's interest to ask for the landowners and tenants at the motorcycle track to attend a community forum to understand the impact that their operation is having on their neighbours and the community's legitimate concerns for the impact of that amenity. Councillor Tully?
Thanks, mayor. I think the major issue here is the increase in the intensity of the use, which was approved many years ago by the Mortonshire Council. And as I understand it, that was in days where the residential area wasn't as expansive as it is now. And it's often said that, you know, someone is there first, councillor Kunsman, I think it was, who mentioned. That's a common statement, but I'll give two examples in Brisbane where eventually some of these nuisances become so great that the particular developments were closed. One was the old Stafford Tannery, which was putting a bad smell over that entire precinct of several square kilometres. And the cement works at Dara, the Dara Cement Company. People moving into the centenary suburbs 30 or more years ago wouldn't have realised that that there was a cement works at Dara, and they were getting cement dust over their homes in the centenary suburbs. So I don't accept completely that people are fully apprised or reasonably apprised of what a particular nuisance or use should be. And as times move on, as residential development increases, it becomes a proper balancing act for the broader community. My view is that we need, as a council, to use every legal and planning power that we have, and perhaps call on the state government to do the same, including noise nuisance. Even though a use may be lawful, the type of news and the use and the characteristics of the use can create a nuisance way beyond what is reasonable under separate legislation. And I think this is a really good opportunity for the community to understand what are legal, difficult legal issues, but at least apprise them that we are willing to support them in every possible way.
Well said, councillor Tully. Councillor Ollin?
Yeah, 20 years ago, when I was living out there, there was an agreement between Ipswich City Council and the owner at the time that they would move all of that motorcycle out to Willow Bank, that all of that would be done at Willow Bank in the motorsport precinct. So I don't know whether it was legal or not, but that's what I remember.
Yeah, look, and we've addressed that in the Shape Your Ipswich page, and went into some, because you know, the landowner did have a lease out there, and then they made the decision to cease that lease, and that information is on the Shape Your Ipswich page. Any other discussion? I'll probably come to you to, as a right of reply, councillor Kunsman at the end. I'll just check in because you've already spoken. Deputy mayor, do you have anything to contribute before I go back to councillor Milligan?
I have nothing but to add.
Thank you, councillor Milligan.
Thank you, mayor. I still think that I am a little bit concerned as to there's no... I still think that I am a little bit concerned as to, there's no, in the motion, there's no explanation as to specifically how this will be conducted, where, I'm a bit concerned with timeframe as well with regards to the results coming back from the EPO that's been issued, that needs to be taken into consideration. I know every day is of essence for the people living with this problem and that urgency is definitely what they would desire. And as councillor Tully had alluded to, in terms of a discussion with residents and if the tenant, the operator, chose to attend because council can't force them to attend, of course, there would be no mechanism for development of any other actions because I'm fully confident that council officers have pursued investigation of every possible means to reduce the impacts around that site. So those are a couple of things that I'm still just have a bit of concern about.
Okay, I guess for myself, I guess I'll go to councillor Kunsulman. I saw that what meeting room, the exact, there are all operational matters that the organisation is more than equipped to deal with and will, and obviously will liaise with us, but I think the main thing is to, we have a situation where the degree of change in operations there is such that every day that it's happening is having significant impact on local residents. So it'd be good to get everyone in the same room to have that discussion, I guess is my view. Councillor Doyle?
Just like to go on record and say that I completely empathise, sympathise with residents and are supportive of them because of that, but just want to go on record that this is not unlike issues faced in all divisions. And so are we setting a precedent that there'll be a community forum? So an example across Division Three, many, many traditional suburbs, traditional old-corner stores, and they had existing uses and hours set over the years and then lay dormant or empty for years. And now suddenly they're being occupied by questionable service providers and it's created enormous impacts for the community. You know, yeah.
Thank you, councillor.
Same argument applies.
I'll hand it over to councillor Kunsulman for right of reply and then put the matter to the vote.
Thank you, ma'am. The timing of the meeting would be when council has had an appropriate amount of time to respond to the operator's response to our EPO. That's the key to the timing of the meeting, so that we have something to go back to residents with. My argument is still that these residents deserve to be heard, it's our obligation to hear them, and I think that the public meeting is probably the way to go, to do this. The extent of the concerns of residents is not obvious from what I've said or what anybody else has said, but it's enormous. These people are living with this noise every weekend, every public holiday, and it's having an effect on their, not only on their amenity, which is a pretty meaningless word, it's having an effect on their lives. And that's why I think that they deserve to be heard and I think that it is our obligation to listen to them.
Thank you, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour of the motion, please raise your hand. And in the room, everyone has their hand raised. I'll just check in with you, deputy mayor. Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to item 14.1, which is a matter to be lifted from the table. There's a requirement to lift this matter from the table before it can be dealt with. It was laid on the table at the Growth Infrastructure Waste Committee on the 1st of December 2021 for a report to the council meeting today. May I have someone to move that?
I'll move an alternative recommendation.
To not lift it off the table?
Oh, sorry, we'll lift it off the table.
Okay, so you'll move to lift off the table. Do I have a second? Thank you, councillor Doyle. Thank you, it's now lifted off the table. Now, the recommendation before us at the moment is that council endorse the current policy of maintaining a water temperature of approximately 29 degrees during the winter season at the Georgie Conway Leichhardt Community Swim Centre 25 metre pool. Did you say you had a variation or amendment to that?
Yeah, I have, yeah, alternative recommendations to propose, and that's based on the information that we received from residents after hearing this in full council. And I guess it boils down to one thing, and it's probably the...
So can I ask you what the alternative motion is?
Yep, just leading into that.
Okay.
Yep. And this is probably what council should have done in the first instance, and that's ask the community. So my alternative recommendations are that A, that council undertake consultation with the users of the Georgie Conway Leichhardt Community Swim Centre to understand the views of the patrons on the suitability of the current and previous water temperature. And that B, that a report outlining the results of the consultation and proposed action be presented to a future meeting of the Community Culture Arts and Sports Committee.
Thank you. As the divisional councillors there, so that's a change, that recommendation, so you're moving that. Do I have a second to that alternative motion? I think councillor Doyle. Those in favour, please raise your hand for the alternative motion. Okay, looking around the room, so I ask you to keep your hand up if you are supportive of it. So that's myself, councillor Madsen, councillor Tully, councillor Doyle, councillor Fekner, councillor Milligan, councillor Kunsulman. Deputy Mayor, how do you vote? Thank you. Those against?
Ma'am, I speak against it.
Later on, so you're voting against the alternative?
Yeah, I'd like to speak to it.
My apologies, I just wanted to follow the meeting procedures here. So that alternative motion is now the motion that's in play, and you'll get a chance to speak against it during this. So the motion that's in play now is the one that councillor Fekner has put forward. Councillor Fekner, would you like to speak to it?
Yeah, just briefly, would like to speak to it. The recommendations speak for themselves. However, the full council has been considering reports, which has collated data, you know, that can only be accessible internally to Ipswich City Council. And one thing that's been missing from this process is the input from the actual users of the pool. Mr Ken Alderton has time and time again told us that he believes the data that we've collected is inaccurate because of the way that the usage of the pool has transpired due to the cooler temperature of the pool. So we haven't really had accurate data because there are people in our community, particularly our elderly residents, avoiding the pool because of its temperature. So we don't really have an accurate, we don't have an accurate understanding of what the community actually thinks about what the pool should happen. Now, councillor Doyle and I have spoken to multiple residents, and there are alternative views out there, so it's time that this council goes to the pool users, asks them how they're interacting with the space and what they would like to see, so that we can actually consider that information moving forward and it be presented to us.
Thank you. With a second, I'd like to speak to it.
Thank you, ma'am. I'd just like to note that what this issue has highlighted is a real need within Ipswich for our ageing population, for an indoor slash heated type facility that has great accessibility, a lot like Leichhardt Pool, Georgie Conway Pool, sorry. It doesn't need to necessarily be disability compliant. We know that Georgie Conway Pool is very popular just because of that very wide amenable access. So I think it's important that, you know, we do discuss going forward where that facility might end up and if Bandamba is that location. But that's something I'll be following up, councillor Fekner and I follow up with council officers, what the plans are down at Bandamba.
Thank you. Councillor Island, you wish to speak against?
Ma'am, I think that we have an Australian of the Year with a disability who is advocating for disabled people to have equity in quality in what everybody else is able to access. I think that there should be a solid roof over the pool to, first of all, to stop that warm air escaping, or there should, I don't know if there's a pool cover over it, but I'd be in favour of keeping it at 33 degrees until such time as we look at enclosing that pool, so that there's a quality across the whole of Ipswich.
Sounds like you're probably not really speaking against it because the motion is to undertake community consultation.
Yeah, that takes another, how long? How long will that take? I think that we need to have some affirmative action for our disability sector and for the older persons in Ipswich. I don't think we have that plan in place. But that's just my feeling. Happy for the community consultation to go ahead, but again, how long is that going to be? When will actually something happen out there? He's asking, I'm sorry, Mr Alderton is asking for the pool to be heated now as we come into winter, and I think that, you know, if we're going to follow our Australians of the years advocacy, then I think we need to take some action. That's just my point of view. Thank you.
May I speak to the relevant council officer? I just have a couple of questions to ask about the report.
Good morning, Sean Madigan, General Manager of Infrastructure and Environment.
Thank you very much, Mr Madigan. On page 37 of 326, there's an error there, this talks about capital improvement works, and there's a discussion under the lease that the LSE must complete some capital works, including a 12 metre undercover heated pool. Is that at the cost of the LSE?
That would be correct, yes.
Okay, so where is that at? And when do they obligated to build that?
Ma'am, I'd have to take that question on notice and come back to you. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions of Mr Madigan? No, thank you very much for your time. Are there any other, anyone else would like to put any discussion views? Councillor Kunsulman?
I'm probably being over careful, but given the change in the motion, I need to declare that I'm an almost daily user of the pool.
Councillor, through you, ma'am, thank you, sorry, just to be cheeky, you prepared to go on record councillor Kunsulman and state your desired temperature?
Ma'am, just a point of order, where are declarations is made? Even if, whatever we decide, I think it's the obligation of council to make a formal decision in relation to that because it's...
Might I just check something with the CEO? I know under the, if something's happening in the area, whether it was fees and charges, whether things aren't. Yeah. So in that case, councillor Kunsulman, you've declared a conflict of interest. Would you like to say if it's a declarable or prescribed conflict?
Personal interest.
Or a personal interest? Well...
But you're quite right, if we are going to the community, I would like, as a user, to be able to contribute to that consultation.
What are you proposing?
I propose that I don't take any part in any further decisions in relation to this matter.
Okay. Would that include leaving this room or you need to put a motion forward?
I've never done this before.
So I can hear some, I think councillor Island's hand up and I hear councillor Fekner speaking.
Sorry, it's one of those, what I call a low-level declaration, but I think it has to be dealt with by council because it has been formally declared. But given the circumstances, I'd move that I'm in the councillor Kunsulman participates and votes on this item because there is no personal or financial benefit, and therefore a reasonable person would trust that the final decision is made in the public interest.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a second of that motion? Thank you, councillor Fekner. I'll put the matter, any of the discussion points? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Okay, so I'll just check here, could you please keep your hand up if you've raised? Okay, so I'll go around the room, councillor Madsen, councillor Tully, councillor Doyle, councillor Fekner, councillor Milligan and myself have put our hand up. Councillor, deputy mayor? Thank you, I'll have a second. Thank you, and those against, councillor Island, votes against. Thank you, so councillor Kunsulman, you can stay in the room and vote on the matter. Thank you. Any other discussion points? No discussion points? I'll actually put that motion that's been put up, the alternative motion that's been put up A and B by councillor Fekner. Would you like a right of reply, councillor Fekner, before we go to vote? Okay, thank you very much. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Okay, it's unanimous in the room. Deputy mayor? Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. Thank you. Item 15 is reception consideration of committee reports, there aren't none, they're up till next month. So we move on to officers' reports, which is item 16. And we go to item 16.1, which is the CEO organisational performance report for November and December. And the recommendation is that the chief executive officer organisational performance report for November and December 2021 be received and contents noted. I'll move that. Do I have a second? Thank you, councillor Doyle. Any discussion? I guess my only question to you, CEO, was, thank you very much for this report. I think it shows in particular excellent performance in the workplace health and safety area. How are we going with managing service delivery and COVID?
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, the report does highlight that as a significant matter, the organisation, like business and industry and other public sector organisations across all of our communities is responding to government directions in relation to the response to COVID-19. So we note that we've had to give effect to public health directions issued and that that continues to occur frequently, as we're aware. So we have had some impacts to service delivery, which we've notified on community, on Ipswich City Council's Facebook page, and we've recently updated that. So they're relatively minor impacts, fortunately, but again, like other businesses across the community, our workforce is being impacted by COVID-19 in terms of positive cases and close contacts, and we're required to follow all the appropriate directions. So the impacts that have been noted, in particular to areas of mowing, where we've had to prioritise particular areas, and we'll keep the community updated and hopefully be able to return to the regular mowing schedule as soon as possible. Updates to the mowing schedule are, of course, continuing to be published. Our construction work is largely continuing unaffected, but we have had some impacts in our ability to perform compliance actions. So that's the key points, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or discussion? No? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room. Deputy mayor?
I voted in favour.
Thank you, it's unanimous and carried.
Ma'am, before we proceed, may I propose an adjournment for 10 minutes?
Yeah, sure. Sorry, I was off. So you'd like to propose adjournment for how long?
I propose that we move an adjournment for 10 minutes.
For 10 minutes, so it's now 9:54, so till 10:04?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll put that matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room. Deputy mayor? Thank you. Thank you, it's ten oh four, we're back from our adjournment. I'll just call attendance again, obviously myself, councillor Ireland, councillor Tully, councillor Doyle, councillor Fekner, councillor Kunselman, I know that councillor Madsen, councillor Milligan are not here. May I just check in with the deputy mayor?
I'm here.
Thank you. I'd like to move that we just change the order of items. Councillor Doyle has a commitment coming up with the Queensland Heritage Council that you're being inducted to, I understand. I would like to move that items sixteen point eleven and sixteen point twelve are dealt with now, and then we'll just continue the normal order. That way, the Nicola Street precinct items can be dealt with while you're here, before you go away to your induction. Do I have a second for that?
Sorry, Mayor. All items on the agenda are obviously extremely important.
Yes.
And I'd certainly prefer to be present for all of them. I just want to make sure that there aren't any others in addition to sixteen point eleven and sixteen point twelve that we might. Okay, so. Yeah, okay, thank you, Mayor, that's fine.
That's fine. So I move that we move sixteen point eleven and two, and councillor Doyle will be seconding that. Thank you, I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room. Deputy mayor?
I voted in favour.
Thank you very much. Since we go to item sixteen point eleven. Thank you, councillor Madsen, thank you, councillor Fekner. Thank you, we go to item sixteen point eleven, which is the Nicola Street Precinct Communications Engagement and Events Report for January twenty twenty. And the recommendation is that the Nicola Street Precinct Communications Engagement and Events monthly report be received and contents noted. I'll move that recommendation. Do I have a second, councillor Doyle? Thank you, would anyone like to speak to that report? No? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous in the room. Deputy mayor? Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. Move on to item sixteen point twelve, which is the Nicola Street Precinct Retail Subproject Steering Committee for December twenty twenty-one. And the recommendation is that the December twenty twenty-one Retail Subproject Steering Committee report be received and contents noted. I'll move that. Do I have a second? Thank you, councillor Doyle. I open up for any discussion? More questions?
Yeah, could I call on, sorry, thank you, Mayor. I do have questions for the relevant council officer.
Good morning, Sean Madigan, General Manager of Infrastructure and Environment.
Thank you, Mr Madigan. Mr Madigan, I'm just, after reading the report on the status of the leasing programme, I just wanted to get clarification on a couple of things, please, and it relates to Metro A and B. Everyone can see that construction is well underway, and the facade is looking amazing. The transformation's coming along nicely, but my understanding is that there's a number of well-proposed leases, we're in discussions with tenants. The report, I think, talks about the fit-outs conducted by the tenants. You know, some are underway, but they're being delayed, and yet we don't have signed leases. Can you just provide some clarification on where we're at?
Yes, certainly. So for Metro B in particular, we have multiple heads of agreements that have been executed with parties. The works have progressed significantly. We are in the stages of finalising approximately three leases for Metro B, which are currently in what we refer to as legals. So that means that effectively our lawyers and the tenants' lawyers are working out timeframes, costs, et cetera, and the final documentation, which will take us to the execution of an actual lease. In the current market, it is progressing really well, so we are not particularly nervous. We do not have companies that we've signed heads of agreements with walking away from Metro B in particular. So we expect some significant announcements with the execution of leases, I would expect, by this next round of the retail sub-project, sorry, the Ipswich Central redevelopment committee. Metro A, we are not progressing, so the facade was approved by council to do the works, but we aren't progressing with any tenant or fit-out works within Metro A. Those funds have not been committed by council at this stage. So it is our intent that whilst we fix up the facade in terms of the overall appearance, you know, of the precinct, we're not actually spending any money at all with regard to tenants or fit-out of Metro A, until we secure tenants, and then we would bring that back to council for a future decision.
Fantastic, that makes sense. So just specifically in relation to Metro B, though, we are, the current status is in design, so can I just understand, and we don't have signed leases, but we do have heads of agreement?
That's correct.
So has council committed any funds towards the design process?
Council has. So in the budget that was adopted as part of the leasing strategy, there are what we call fit-out incentive payments that are captured in the overall budget for the Nicola Street precinct. That budget was built basically on an apportionment across each of the different tenancies to say, this is how much we would expect. And that is part of the budget that council adopted and approved for the Nicola Street precinct, probably a year ago now or more. Whilst we go to design, the, why you need to go through the design stage while you're in the legals is to work out what the actual overall costs are going to be, and what that cost-sharing arrangement will be, which will be documented in the legals. So it is money that is required to be spent in order to finalise the legal documents, to then execute an agreement for lease for the premises.
And so would inform the commercial terms of those individual leases as well?
Absolutely, yeah. And that's why generally on those design costs, they'll be shared as well between ourselves and the tenant, so they'll present some themselves as to what designs they're proposing, and so it forms part of the negotiations and the finalisation of those legal documents.
Okay, thank you. And secondly, just in relation to the Commonwealth Hotel, the operator that we've, the proposed operator that we've been working with, there is mention in the report, and we've discussed this, I guess during committees for some time, that it may be beneficial and certainly reduce the risk for council if that proposed operator takes on the management of the construction themselves. How has that progressed? Where are we at with locking that away?
Yeah, the Commonwealth Hotel, the negotiations on that one are progressing really well. So the proposed operator is looking to execute the lease documents or agreement for lease as soon as possible. The scale and the type of the fit-out that they're proposing would be best left with them to manage. They are a recognised brand within the Ipswich market and broader across Queensland, and have expertise in relation to the design and fit-out of a pub. They were hoping, in their ideal circumstances, to be open by Christmas of this year. But that remains to be seen whether that can be achieved in light of some of the supply chain issues of COVID and a variety of things. So the Commonwealth Hotel commercial arrangements are progressing really well. The tenant remains committed, and yet again, we'd love to have an announcement in the next couple of months as to who that is.
No, that's a fantastic outcome, if we can achieve that. The one concern I've raised, and I know it's been noted by council officers, if the proposed operator takes on the construction, what does council's role look like to maintain, I guess, some type of control and influence? Should we, should we need, should we become concerned about certain aspects?
Yeah, so that would come back to the drafting of the agreement for lease, to ensure that we protect ourselves and our interests in there. So where there is, in these sorts of commercial setups, when a tenant is doing the design and fit-out, it is a normal procedure for that design and fit-out to be approved, you know, by the less all. So that would be the clause in there, that they have to present designs, and they have to be approved by council, effectively.
So if the costs look like blowing out, we would certainly have levers within our legal agreement to ensure that we're not on the hook.
Absolutely, and this tenant is proposing to put in significant amounts of their own capital, so it should be noted that. In the agreement for lease that we would execute, we would indicate in there specifically as to what our contribution is, and it would be limited to that contribution. In the event that there are costs blowout or design changes that occur, then that would be the tenant's responsibility to wear those additional costs.
Okay, and of course, it goes without saying that we need protection within that agreement for our beautiful heritage renovation there on the hotel, so any extension... So any extension and works, we need to make sure, obviously, that are in keeping with the hotel and it's protected during construction.
Absolutely, and that under, that's all covered and effectively under the development application that would be required. And that's overseen by the the Planning and Regulatory Services Department of Council, which is independent to the the project team that is negotiating the lease and the like.
Thank you, Mr Madigan. Thank you.
I'll move to any discussion? No? In that case, I'll put this motion to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room. Deputy Mayor?
I'm voting in favour.
Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. Thank you. I'll now wait for councillor Madsen, councillor Fickner to return. Actually, we could break for morning tea. I'm looking at councillor Doyle, because I know you've got your Queens and Heritage Council induction.
Perhaps we could just keep going?
Keep going? We'll keep going.
Yeah, I've got fifteen minutes, thank you.
Thank you. We're now on item six point two, which is the media and corporate communications policy. And the recommendation that the policy title and media policy as outlined in attachment A be repealed, sorry, attachment one be repealed. And B, that the draft policy title and media and corporate communications policy as outlined in attachment two be adopted. I guess I'll look to councillor Fickner, as I know that you sort of instigated this. Did you wish to move that?
No, I wished, you haven't moved that?
No.
No, I wish to propose an alternative recommendation. And that we lay the matter on the table until the next full council meeting. Until the next council ordinary meeting, rather.
Yep. So we'll be looking to vote on whether we will allow the alternative motion?
That'd be treated as a procedural motion.
Yeah, the procedural motion. Do I have anyone who would like to second that? Councillor Tully? So put that to, put that to the, any discussion? No, I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room. Deputy Mayor?
I'm voting in favour.
Thank you, so that's the alternative motion on the floor. The matter be laid on the table. Now, I'm guessing councillor Fickner, you'll move that motion?
Because it was procedural, therefore it is.
It is, so that's done?
And then we move on.
Yep, okay, thank you. We'll move on to item sixteen point three. That's the Jane Gory Park Community Hub Augustin Heights hire fees. And the recommendation that the proposed fees for hire of the Jane Gory Park Community Hub, as detailed in attachment two to the report, be adopted with an effective date of the twentieth of January twenty twenty two. So I'll move that report. Do I have a second, councillor Tully? I'll now open it up for discussion. I think councillor Tully would like to speak to it.
Yes, Mayor, just briefly, in relation to this facility and a possible amendment, I support the proposal in relation to the fees recommended, which are reasonable and modest. But this is an opportunity that the council acquired about seven or eight years ago as part of the development, most of the residential development of Augustin Heights, where the the developer owned this area adjacent to Jane Gory Park. And the, they brought in a removable office, which they used as a semi-permanent real estate office. They also had a car park, which was eventually going to be turned into seven or eight residential lots, which would have meant that people on the opposite side of the road, who thought they were buying land opposite parkland, would have had these houses developed adjacent to the real estate office. And the bitumen car park, which is used even now by residents going to the park, would have had a row of houses on them. So the arrangement through council was beneficial, significantly beneficial to the community that the developer provided the real estate office, the actual building, which could have been removed to another site in south-east Queensland, the land and the building and the adjoining land, so that those buildings weren't weren't built. And were didn't need to be built. And they, it it meant that the council, by just increasing the density slightly in the remainder of the estate, just some very minor changes, that the community has acquired this particular facility at basically no cost to the community. I inspected the the upgraded facility. It was a pretty, it was a real estate office, so it wasn't sort of the Taj Mahal. But it's come up very, very well, what the council has done. It it would fit twenty, maybe up to thirty people. And I understand there's already community groups from the, even from the Camira area, the smaller groups, obviously, but it's a community hub, which I am really pleased that that has now come to fruition. What I wanted to move formally move, so that the council can formally make the decision in in relation to the to the facility. And I'll move this to, as an addition to the recommendation, the recommendation, first recommendation become A, the second become B, that the facility be formally named the Augustin Heights Community Hub. Is this one thing I would just like to check? Is the the spelling in the report is G O R Y? It's G O double R Y as as the wording, but that appears. But that if we formally adopt the Augustin Heights as the as the descriptor, it gives a broader community perspective to to this particular facility. So I'll formally move that as as an addition to that recommendation. Thank you.
So do you want to put that, the, so we fall?
What was it, nightmare, sorry, councillor Tully?
Well, that the Jane Gory Park Community Hub?
He means formal, not former.
It'd be formally, yes, so I think he means. Do you want to, do you want to take that out?
Yeah, yeah, probably.
No.
Probably the first recommendation be hire of the.
Community hub?
Yeah, the community hub, hire of the community hub. And then B, as I, as I said, that the facility be formally named, F L R M A double R Y, named Augustin Heights Community Hub.
May I just go, just check with the CEO about any naming procedures for anything like this? If there's any obligation on us to do community consultation or anything like that?
My call, Don, ask that Don Stewart come forward just to answer any questions. But I don't believe, my understanding is that community consultation would be required. It just, subject to what Mr Stewart has to say, it might just be beneficial to, I'm conscious of the the family, I guess, and just wanting to manage any communications that might be required in relation to the the change, sorry.
Certainly. I guess we could ask Mr, we could say your name and your title?
Don Stewart, Manager of Community and Cultural Services.
Thank you. Councillor Tully, do you have some questions on the naming?
Yeah, I'd inspected that with Don this morning. And I just want to reiterate how good that has come up. And it will be accessible by by code, you know, the punch code for community groups to get in. So I think it's, it's been a little while in coming, but I think the outcome's good. I think I said to you, Don, the the wider name, we're not likely, there aren't many community facilities in the suburb of Augustin Heights. And to give that wider name gives a focal point for the whole suburb rather than one park name, which a lot of people don't even, or not aware of that name of that park along Santa Monica Drive.
Yes, the 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 naming of the community hub was just really an extension of the fact that it sat within the the boundary of the Jane Gory Park. That was the only rationale behind the the naming of that facility.
So are there any council policies or any hindrances to renaming that? Are there any obligations we have in renaming it?
We would follow a protocol and consult with the relevant council officers of the council. And from there, we would determine the name and we would commission the sign through our sign department and and mount accordingly.
And in that process, a councillor is involved?
We would obviously come to the councillors to make sure that we have spelling correct and and presentation and we follow the brand guidelines, yes.
Okay, okay. Any other questions, Mr Stewart?
No, I'm happy with that. But probably in this situation, this, the intention was to, bearing in mind the the no need for consultation with the community and and other requirements, that we're probably in a position to formally decide that today. So that when we announce the availability and the costs, that we can immediately use the proposed formal name.
Thank you, Mrs Stewart. In that case, as the mover, and obviously councillor Tully, you're the 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 second, I'm up into that variation, had that additional recommendation and that minor amendment to recommendation A. So recommendation A now becomes that the proposed fees for hire of the community hub, we just take out the word Jane Gory Park, and then attachment, and then recommendation B as listed? Are you okay, that's councillor Tully?
That's exactly as I thought was right, to amend paragraph A as well, but by deletion of those other words.
So the mover and the second have agreed to that variation. I now move the matter out to the to the floor. Councillor Ireland?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to support the Planning Department on being able to acquire this real estate for a community hub in Red Bank Plains, largest suburb. We don't have sufficient meeting rooms. And I'm still waiting for the report on the Red Bank Plains Library. But I I really support more community hubs going up in the community. So it's a good outcome from planning, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ireland. Because in the deputy mayor's division, do you have any any comments, deputy mayor?
Hi, no, just just to reiterate what councillor Tully was saying, his point that he made in relation to Augustin Heights not having any community facilities presently. So, yeah, I do agree with renaming.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Any other discussion? Any write-off reply, councillor Tully? Okay, I'll put the the recommendation A and B to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room. Deputy Mayor?
I'm voting in favour.
Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We're now moving on, and I'm thinking I'm getting a adjournment. Would you like to move for an adjournment, councillor Doyle?
Fifteen minutes, Mayor, for a morning tea.
For a morning tea, okay, thank you. So it's fifteen minutes, councillor Doyle's move, so it's ten, just to make it easier, ten twenty-eight. Can we make it back at ten forty-five?
Yeah.
Thank you. I'll put that to the vote, those in favour. It's unanimous in the room. Deputy Mayor?
In favour.
Thank you, see you at ten forty-five. Thank you very much, it's ten forty-five, and we're back with the ordinary council meeting, we're up to item sixteen point four, just calling attendance, I have councillor Madsen, councillor Ireland, councillor Tully, councillor Fekner, councillor Milligan, councillor Kunsman, just confirming deputy mayor that you're there?
I'm here.
That's right. And has anyone heard from the councillor Doyle, she's doing her induction, is that correct? Okay, councillor Doyle's been selected to be on the Queensland Heritage Council, I understand that she's doing her induction at the moment and their timings couldn't be moved. So move on to item fourteen, sixteen point four, which is the Ripley Priority Development Area Infrastructure Provision, repealing resolution B of Planning, Development and Heritage Committee Report Number One of the twenty-eighth of November from two thousand seventeen. And there are two recommendations here, that the council, A, the council repeal recommendation B of the report to the Planning, Development and Heritage Committee in two thousand seventeen, titled Ripley PDA Trunk Infrastructure Provision adopted by council resolution on the fifth of December, and B, that council endorsed with consideration in a twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget amendment, the commencement of the planning and design for the upgrade of Ripley Road between, I know it's got Trigoda Street, but it's actually Trigoda Drive and Binney's Road, a new alignment to be funded from the collected PDA municipal development contributions. So I'll move that recommendation, I think councillor Madsen, did you wish to second that?
Sure.
Thank you. And I think you may have an amendment?
Yeah, it's, now I've got to move for the additional recommendation.
Yes.
It'll appear on screen, that coun, a recommendation C, that council prepare costings for inclusion in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget deliberations regarding the section of Fisher Road Ripley between Monterey, Monterey Road and Nevis Street.
Thank you, I'm happy for that being there, obviously, and you are yourself. So the active recommendations are A, B and C, as before us. Would anyone like to ask any, will council officers, any questions, councillor Tully would? In which part, this particular one's quite broad, this particular, which area are you looking to ask questions in councillor Tully? Finance or planning, I guess was what I'm looking at?
Both.
Both. Who would you like to come up first? Okay, will I ask Mr Bowles to come up first? Do you want to state your, your name and your position, please?
Good morning, American councillors, Anthony Bowles, acting development planning manager.
Thank you, Mr Bowles, councillor Tully?
Yeah, just like to put this in context, because it's been, remember the minister in Mackay at the local government conference in two thousand and ten announcing this, what we now call a PDA, so that's going on to twelve years, but it's, it's a comment on page, oh, it's on, I'm not sure if you're using the same page numbers, but page one O one, down on the third paragraph stating, the second point is noted, and then it goes on to say revocation is now considered unlikely, can I just stop there, when's the last time we, we sought as a council to, for the government to revoke the, you know, to revoke this regime?
I, I don't believe there's ever been a motion by the council to seek revocation. There has been conversations at an officer level between representatives of planning and development and the, depending on the, the time, the state departments in charge of the PDAs, and a lot of the conversations have been what would be necessary to, to carry out a revocation, what would the impacts would be. The ability to do so becomes more and more difficult as more issue, permits and activity is carried out under the regime that manages the PDA, being the Economic Development Act. So early discussions, there was only one or two permits that were issued on one or two development fronts. At the point we're at now, there's a significant amount of development occurring from multiple parties, which limits our ability to carry out revocation. But as far as to answer the question, I, I don't believe a resolution has ever come up to council seeking to revoke the PDA.
You're certainly right that the representations were made at, at a reasonably high level on a number of occasions, except what you're saying with that. What's, the, the next bit is, and would be unfavorable for council, in what way would it be unfavorable, financial, political, planning point of view, if it were to be revoked?
There, there's a few things, so the, one of the benefits of the PDA, which has two sides, so I suppose that one of the benefits is a lot of the planning work is carried out by EDQ in terms of infrastructure planning, that's something that we would have to, have to do or replicate. The PDA has, in the, under the legislation that governs how we carry out development assessment, it has, I suppose, more freedoms or more ability to carry out development in a quicker way, basically in a way that is streamlined, that, that is the purpose of the PDA, is to allow for development to occur within a, a different framework to the planning act. So, for example, we have a process called compliance assessment in the PDA, which is essentially a faster way of processing operational works applications that we would normally do in the, the rest of the cities. So there are some benefits to the operation of the, of the PDA, there are also, there's also the shared responsibility between the EDQ and council and administering it, which the other side of that is that there's basically two, two parents essentially, you have to, to ask to do certain things, but at the same time, there's a level of cooperation and opportunities there by including the state government in a lot of the decision making. One of the very big, and the, probably the main reason why the EDQ, the PDA benefits council is the catalyst infrastructure fund, or the funds that are accumulated through the catalyst infrastructure fund. So there's a large number of infrastructure items that have been constructed in the PDA that have been funded through loans through the Queensland Treasury Corporation and through an agreement with the developer, that would be difficult to come, come to pass if it were part of our typical regime. So I would say probably the biggest one would be the catalyst funding, but the shared legislative regime has some benefits to us.
So that catalyst funding from the state, am I right in saying that the developers are, are no longer contributing to a lot of trunk infrastructure that other developers would, would be contributing towards?
It's, it's a little bit complicated in that the, the catalyst funding is essentially a loan, and there was a pool of approximately, I think, forty-six million dollars, and what that, what that allowed was for developers to select items of infrastructure that was necessary to carry out development in that area, so examples being some sewer connections to the Echo Ripley, bridge to Providence and the Cumnor Road connection. So it's, it's really just another source of funding for those pieces of infrastructure. Most of that funding has been consumed, but it, it isn't the only source of funding for municipal infrastructure in the valley, so the rest is the municipal contributions that we collect, and also offset for other pieces of infrastructure. So examples of that are some of the parks in Echo and in Monterey and then things like that, so they're, they're municipal infrastructure rather than necessarily catalyst infrastructure, but to, to sort of confuse things a bit, municipal and catalyst aren't mutually exclusive, so you can have access to the catalyst funds to construct municipal infrastructure. Catalyst is really just a phrase for this, this bucket of money that is available for use by developers through an infrastructure agreement with the developer EDQ and potentially urban utilities.
Thank you, just finally, but in the same vein, a developer that was developing, say, any number of lots, hundred lots, five hundred lots in the Ripley Valley, in the PDA area, are they paying the same contributions or lesser, wouldn't be more, lesser than another developer in another part of the city under our planning scheme?
They are paying a, a small amount more, I think it's about fifteen hundred dollars more. The, the big difference though, isn't the total amount, it's the way the money is split up into subcategories. So when the contributions are paid outside of the Ripley PDA, there are five infrastructure networks, water, sewer, roads, parks, land for community facilities. In Ripley, there's a greater division of those funds for different purposes, but as well as that, roads, parks, community, land for community facilities and water and sewer. So the difference, one of the very big differences in the Ripley PDA is that the, a portion of that thirty-three thousand odd dollars is contributed to state government infrastructure, which is for land for public schools, just the land and just for public schools. So the, outside of Ripley, we might have a, a slightly smaller number, but a larger proportion of that money, of that money comes to council, whereas inside Ripley, a proportion is a proportion is for a few other things in addition to, um, the municipal infrastructure.
So that at Red Bank Plains, for example, a comparably sized development, the council would get the benefit of that full amount effectively?
Um.
Except if it's going to.
With the exception of the proportion going to that, that's right. Ye- yes. In, in summary, the, the amount council would receive would ultimately be a larger amount than in Ripley.
And that goes back to the original decision of, you know, why council residents elsewhere and they're, you know, paying for, you know, so ma- major infrastructure. Yeah, that pretty well answers everything I, from, from both financial and a planning perspective. Thank you.
Councillor Ald?
I was going to ask much of the same questions on what the benefit and the, um, breakup of the money was, but, um, just the nine million dollars, is it nine million dollars that we're going to use? Is that all collected just through Ripley Valley, Debing Heights, or is that from the whole of the city?
Okay, so, um, I can give you a bit more information about that figure. So the nine million dollars is municipal contributions, um, collected just in the Ripley PDA. So there is actually a, a small section of Debing Heights that is in the PDA, but for the most part, it is the funds collected over the last couple of years in the, the PDA itself. Um, a lo- a large amount of that has been collected in the last, um, year or two years, depending how you look at it. So last year alone, two, twenty twenty one, a calendar year, um, was four point nine million collected in that year alone. Um, twenty twenty to twenty twenty two, um, seven point three million. So what you're seeing is a, a graph like that, where at the beginning, uh, the first, I think, five years, we only collected one point seven million, um, and the rest has come along quickly. There's a couple of reasons for that. Um, first reason is that the majority of the, um, development that has occurred up to, up to now, or up to the last two years, has, um, been matching those contributions with infrastructure that's been delivered. And some of the development that's happening now benefits from that infrastructure that has been developed. So they're not required to go build a new road because the road is already there, or they don't require to build a park because an adjacent developer has already built a park, so they don't need it. So they're paying the contribution. So that's how the contributions have spiked a fair bit in the last two years. The other reason is there's more activity. Um, so it's a combination of those two things have increased the amount of funding we have available. I will say though, that nine million, hyper, uh, in, in, in practice, um, the, the contributions are for water, sewer, um, parks, roads and land for community facilities. We collect for both networks or both, all, all those networks. But the, it is a shared network, so a shared pot. So the, there's cross crediting across those networks. So, um, some of the money that we have given offsets for in the past has been for water and sewer networks. So, um, it's, it's, um, it's difficult to predict in the future how many, how much more money we'll have because we're not sure necessarily of all the networks that might be required to be serviced when a new development comes along. So we might know the roads, water and, um, land for community facilities, but if, if we're not in touch with, um, the construction costs of a sewer or water network for a development, it could significantly reduce the amount of contributions we would see from that development. So it's sort of been a, a tricky road to predict how many, how much funds council will receive from development activity, because really, we're better off acting on, once we have received the money.
Certainly growing out there, I don't think it's going to be for Debing Heights and just lay it up side by side.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, that'll happen soon.
Mr Bowles, talking about the, the challenges of predicting, uh, EDQ doing any modelling of, it must be able to have some type of understanding of, um, what's going to be coming in. And we know from our planning what we'd like to see when it comes to trunk infrastructure. Has that modelling been done?
Uh, so EDQ have been very busy creating, um, what's called a, a D-Cop, which is a developer contributions offset plan, which is replacing the current one, which is called NICOP. Um, the key difference between the new plan and the one we have now is, um, the sequencing of the infrastructure, so timeframes for the delivery of infrastructure. Uh, that, that's the efforts from EDQ to predict where they believe the infrastructure will be, or at least respond to where they believe it is needed. So, uh, EDQ are, um, undertaking work in that space to address the, the timeframes and, and have a better, um, grip on when infrastructure will be required. Uh, that will be one part of the picture though. It won't be the full picture. Um, the, the market does still decide a lot of what, what goes ahead and what doesn't. Um, so in terms of latent capacity, there's a huge amount of development approvals that have been issued that are being taken up, um, some several years old now. Um, and it, it all comes down to a combination of availability of offsets, um, market competition and, um, I suppose, just general capability. So.
So if this, um, these three recommendations go through today, that will impact the, the sequencing of the draft D-Cop?
Um, the, I haven't, we haven't seen, the D-Cop hasn't been adopted yet, so we haven't been consulted with the final version. So I don't actually know when these pieces of infrastructure are planned to be, um, uh, constructed or at least identified to be constructed. Um, so it's, it's likely that, just by coincidence, the timeframes that we carry out the activity meets the, um, um, D-Cop timeframes. But it, it, you don't need to really guess that Ripley Road is needed right now. Uh, so you might just be able to deduce that by going out there. Um, and, and.
I think also Fisher Road as well.
Yeah, so there's a, there's a high likelihood that what these, uh, these activities that we're proposing will align with the D-Cop even though we haven't seen the, those timeframes.
And the, the nine million, obviously, and that, that money's going to be, um, escalating, obviously. That money can only be spent in the Ripley PDA, so whatever, um, that money there can't be spent elsewhere in Ipswich.
That's, that's right. So, um, look, it's anticipated to escalate, but again, there's difficulties in predicting that, but that, that's the likely outcome, particularly by carrying out these activities because there, there won't be someone spending them, or offsetting that money. Um, but the nine million is, is to be spent in the Ripley PDA. There, there are other components of the collective contributions that can be spent outside of the PDA, but on specific projects. Um, and there, there's two projects. Uh, one is the sewer connection to Bundamba Sewer Trichwick Plant and the other one is, um, upgrade works through Edward Street, um, Edward's Road in, um, Raceview and Flinders View. So, but that's a separate component and that is not out of the nine million we're talking about today.
Okay. Thank you. Councillor Ald?
Um, it's wonderful that we're doing that upgrade through the Old Township. Have we talked to, um, TMR? Uh, because once we get up to the roundabouts, they're still stuck in the one lines going through, so it doesn't solve the traffic jams that we're getting on Ripley Road.
Uh, um, we have issued correspondence to TMR recently, I believe, from the C, the CEO, um, to, uh, also to the Deputy, Deputy Premier, I think that's who we write to, I should remember that. But so we've read, we write a lot of letters. Um, we have highlighted that as a concern, absolutely as a concern. There's several, um, network upgrades required by the state to service the valley. Um, there are new interchanges required. The, as far as I'm aware, the most recent, uh, update is that the, um, TMR are preventing, um, commencing corridor studies along the, um, the Cunningham Highway section from Logan Road, um, from Logan, um, the Logan Midway? Yeah. Yeah. Oh, sorry, no, no, the Cunningham. Yeah, it's up to, up to, um, basically all the way out to near Willerbank. So that's really just corridor investigation study. So actual works, very little is planned for that unfortunately.
Thank you. Any other questions of Mr Bowles? No, thank you very much. Are there any other questions of council officers?
I have a question.
Yeah.
I'm unsure who in the room will be answering it for us. Um, with regards to the costings of Fisher Road, um, I just, I want to understand what the likelihood is of getting an accurate figure before we actually go into deliberations? What might be involved in that?
So would that be a CFO or the relevant council officer?
It's either infrastructure planning or, or it's treasury. I don't, I don't mind.
Mr Madigan? Uh, Mr Bowles would like to.
I beg your pardon, Mr Bowles.
Okay, I'll, I'll do my best. Um, what I can tell you is in the cost schedule from the, um, the ICOP.
Yep.
So it's, just give me one second. It is tiny. So just, I might just make a reference to the map that is in attachment, um, attachment two. Uh, and you'll, you'll see a, a roadmap, um, and there are red lines and blue lines. Um, I think what we're mostly making reference to is the red line behind the Old Town being two items there, R O eleven A and R O eleven B.
Yep.
So what I can give you is the, um, cost estimate in the ICOP from those, but I'll have to make some caveats to that. Um, because, um, some of that will be developer funded or developer constructed because it is adjoining, um, a development site. So please take it as an estimate.
Uh, yeah, I'm fine to just have that discussion within, within the budget deliberations. I was just wondering if we had access to all of the information that we might need. I'm supportive of Councillor Madsen's inclusion of it to discuss there. I was just wondering if we had those estimates to discuss, so that's great.
Yeah, I do have a figure I can give you. For, so for R O eleven A, three point four million. R O eleven B, four point seven million. And I must just add that big caveat of some of it will be developer constructed. Some of that is for the ultimate upgrade and some of it's for the interim grade. So it, it's a, it's a big sliding scale. But if you go by what's in the ICOP for those two infrastructure items, you, you get those amounts.
And is that based on preliminary design, detailed design?
That's, that's based on two, but it's basically two items. It's the design for the interim and the construction of the interim, two lane, and then a design and construction for the four lane. So it's, um, it, it includes those elements essentially.
So really budget deliberations won't just include that particular section either. It will, it would be potentially all encompassing now that, well, if council decides to go ahead with the rescinding of its decision, then all of these become a consideration, I guess, in a way. And from an infrastructure planning perspective, to have awareness over that and to look into it.
Yeah, so, uh, that's a good point. So we've got two items there, two specific pieces of infrastructure that, um, we will be acting on immediately.
Yeah.
We'll have to carry out similar activities and similar budget amendments as time progresses to include more items into the budget. That, that'll occur. However, you know, these two are the sort of obvious ones that would happen immediately.
Yeah. And the heavy lifting on the infrastructure planning side of things, is that EDQ or ICC?
EDQ. Um, so we all have a better figure than the ones I gave you soon when the D-Cop comes out. We'll have more, much more information. The sophistication of the, um, cost modelling that EDQ are carrying out is much more advanced than the current level. So we'll have more information on that. Um, and we'll have those antici- anticipated timings, but, um, we'll still have to, um, uh, transmute that into our budget processes. If, if we anticipate that we will be constructing the infrastructure rather than the developers, which will still be carrying the bulk of the work in terms of the delivery of infrastructure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Bowles. There's no other questions, I'll, I'll move into discussion. And from my perspective, I, I look at the fact that the, I understand the previous council's resolution, um, that we are looking at repealing, um, there's trunk infrastructure there that, that should be car- the, the burden of that, the cost of that should be carried by the municipal development charge, also the EDQ, the Economic Development Queensland catalyst funding line as well should be covering that. So I can completely understand why council put that resolution in place. And I guess for us, we're coming forward to say, what other mechanisms can we, can we do? So I'll, I'll be support, obviously supportive of, of these notions in trying to move things forward, noting that the rate pays of it shouldn't have to carry the burden if a developer or, um, catalyst funding from the state government is where it should, should be coming from. So I'll be very cognizant of that when we do this as well. Any other discussion? Yes, Councillor Madsen?
Uh, thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to talk briefly from the community's perspective. Um, the roads we've referred to and those specific sections on B and C, um, we've actually had a lot of complaints as divisional councillors, um, in regards to safety. Um, the, the road width and the chicanery in the section on Fisher Road is pretty, pretty full on when you've got a truck coming the other way, which is a regular occurrence because of the development in the area. Um, we've also been approached by residents on Ripley Road who, um, are pretty terrified of leaving their driveway out on the Ripley Road in peak hour. Um, and it's justified if you sit there and you look at the, the volumes that are now using that road. It's going to be one of the biggest roads, um, in Ipswich for traffic. Um, so it's pretty vital that we, uh, provide a safe transport network. I think we're on the path forward to do that, um, with this motion. Um, I concur with you that I think the development should be paying for the infrastructure because the whole reason that we, we raise rates from properties is not, is not to build new capital projects like that, where the benefits to an area that's been newly created, um, it's, rates is more there for maintenance of existing infrastructure rather than new builds. Of course, we always can if we have to, but as a general rule, it's not there for that. So I agree. Um, development should pay for that through the lots. Um, and in regards to the stuff with EDQ, I'd like to touch base on where we're at, um, in the sort of political sphere of, of Ipswich politics with that. I think we've got a great deal of buy-in from the state MPs who have this area. They're keen to work with council to resolve these matters. Um, we had a PDA forum at the tail end of last year where a number of representatives from EDQ came in. I think they've also got a real, um, priority to make sure that they work it out with their offices. And, um, I would end on the note that, um, just commanding Mr Bowles and his team, they've worked very hard on figuring out what is an inherently com- complex piece of legislation. Um, some of these elements can't be explained in layman's terms. It's very technical. Um, and people can be assured that, um, the elected body here at council, but also the bureaucracy, are working really hard to make sure that we get a great outcome for the residents of Ripley.
Thank you, Councillor Madsen. I'll put recommendations A, B and C to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. In the room, it's unanimous, uh, Deputy Mayor?
I voted favour.
Thank you very much. It's unanimous and carried. We'll now move on to sixteen point five, which is the development application recommendation. So it's the council approved the development rec- development application number seven nine four two slash two zero one eight slash M A M C slash A, subject to conditions as contained in attachment one of this report. Um, and it's regarding, I guess, the, the change of use uh, for racing remote control scale car, model cars, I think the, the quarter scale cars. Would anyone like to ask, may I ask the relevant council officer to come to the election so we can ask some questions?
Anthony Bowles, Acting Development and Planning Manager.
Mr Bowles, I'm looking at page one hundred and sixteen of three two six, and it says that on the twenty first of January two thousand and nineteen, council issued a decision notice in relation to the development permit. In, in plain language, what does that mean?
I'll just get to the, the same.
Sure, sorry. Page one hundred and sixteen, under proposal.
Okay, so, uh, on January two thousand and nineteen, um.
Councillor, what does that mean in plain language?
Uh, we, we approved a development application, um, in that case for recreation use. Um, so plain language is, um, an application was lodged and having assessed the application, council made and gave an approval.
And so what, what's the difference with this MCU that's come before us today?
Uh, this essentially changes it, um, uh, a change, um, application to that, um, original approval. Um, if you have a look at the, the plans, a very small section of one of the lease areas, lease area D, um, introduces essentially a new track, a little oval for quarter scale racing. Um, it's in the same proximity as some of the other smaller scale dirt racing activities. So the, the Dirt Club, um, Dirt Cart Club is next door. So really just, um, provides a lawful avenue for the activity to occur in that location, essentially.
Okay. Um, also, it talks about, uh, race days occurring once a month between the hours of ten AM. Um, also it talks about uh race days occurring once a month between the hours of ten AM and four PM with a maximum number of anticipated participants, uh, between sixty, up to sixty people. Um, how will that, I'm just looking at what's happening up in Chiuwa at the moment.
Hmm.
And obviously we're looking at scale cars, not when you're as noisy as, as trail bikes. Um, will that be in the conditions or how, how is that being managed?
Yeah, so that will be in the conditions. I believe that's conditioned, it should be in the operation. If you have a look at one of the attachments, um. No, not, not quite that one. I think we have one related to. Actually, we've got hours of operation, number nine, is for the um days and times.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I don't believe there's a specific limit on the actual number of spectators. So I think we, we mentioned there that there are approximately sixty spectators.
What's in the report?
Um, but I don't believe we specifically.
The maximum number of anticipated participants, spectators is expected to be sixty people. It's on page one hundred and sixteen.
Yep, I don't think we specifically limit as a condition the number of spectators. We just limit the hours of operation.
Okay, and I also noticed one of the exemptions with two that hours of operation was working bees. Again, because of what's happening up in Chiuwa, how, how is that being managed?
Um, well, I'd suppose that would be through communication with the landowner, which is being cancelled. Is, we're the lease owner of that, so we should be able to manage those, I think, by communicating with the club. Um, but there isn't a specific condition relating to working bees. We've just got the hours of operation and the hours of construction.
It does have an exemption there listed.
That's, that's right. Um, so I suppose that, that would just be, again, up to, up to council to manage that through, um, as a leaseholder.
Okay. Um, there's a list of new works there, the establishment of a hundred and forty metre long, uh, five to six metre wide oval gravel, gravel, gravel track. Will that be done by the, the tenant or who's paying for that? But the list of works there as well as a building and a story shared.
Uh, I believe that will be the tenant. Um, if they, if it's, it will be done by council, be through another area, through a grant, potentially through council. But as, uh, we're assessing the application for the use rather than the arrangements for carrying out.
I'm just wanting, I'm wanting to know if there's a financial implication for council on the rate pays.
Um, I'd have to check and see if there's been a grant given by another part of council. I'm not aware of that. Again, whether regulating the land use, not the, the financial giving of the money. So I wouldn't, unfortunately, I'm unable to answer that.
Thank you, I didn't have any other questions. Councillor Conwell?
Not sure it's an appropriate question, but given Chiuwa, uh, is there likely to be reforming of the track outside of the allowed hours? Do you know?
There's, we, well, in this case, we have conditions that limit operation hours and hours of construction. So uh we have much more control over here in Chiuwa. And I suppose one of the important differences between this one and Chiuwa is it's in our designated motorsports precinct, where these, these tracks are expected uses, so I suppose. Uh, so the, I, I don't think it's probably that fair to make a direct comparison, given what, what we're dealing with is in the intended location rather than something that's historic approval. So, um, so having said that, there are conditions restricting hours of construction as well as hours of operation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. We would like to move this recommendation. Councillor Ireland? You have a second there? Here, councillor Pecna? Thank you. I'll open it up for discussion. There being no discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour of this recommendation, please raise your hand. Around the room, it is unanimous, deputy mayor?
I voted favour.
Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. Next item is sixteen point six, the procurement of online advertising. There are three recommendations before us in regards to um advertising and, I guess, doing sole source uh with, with Facebook and Google are not going to the market. May I ask for the relevant council officer to come to the lectern, please?
Excuse me, chair, are they procurement related or more of the nature of the business?
Of, of the nature of the business, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, good morning, Carly Gregory, manager of marketing and promotions branch.
Thank you very much. Miss Gregory, I noticed in the um city events and marketing branch, there's a budget, I see, that was published last year of about five point eight million dollars for that budget. And obviously we're looking at spending this amount of um money, I think with Facebook, it's about two hundred and thirty thousand a year and fifty thousand with, with Google. Uh, and I also look at our local um print media as well, and, and we've got some fledging papers that are working really hard to represent our community. What are we doing here to make sure that money is being, you know, supporting local as well as supporting the, the needs of the community? So could you provide a little bit more context?
Yeah, some context on the spend. So obviously we always deal with a full media mix based on what audience we're trying to target at the time. I think it's important, especially around the digital, um, to sort of say historically since about twenty sixteen, so I came in late twenty eighteen, but have a full view over that time, about sixty percent of the digital spend has traditionally been for destination, for the Discover Ipswich brand. So as you can appreciate, while some of that is spent locally, much of that is spent out of region to attract visitation outside the area into the city for economic benefit. So just to sort of quantify that spend, you know, around a hundred and fifty of that digital um is with that. Another five percent is traditionally on um our skip hire, so the Ipswich Way Services commercial operation. So as you can imagine, people on their phones looking for skip hire, you know what I mean? It's quite easy to target digitally, that kind of thing. Um, in the current year, um, to put it into some context, um, as you can imagine, in twenty twenty, on the twenty ninth of July, the QT stopped printing, went online. Um, from October that year to mid last year, we had four publications come into the market new, three of those print, one a monthly mag. Um, it takes some time for those magazines or print products to decide what their distribution model is. Is it subscriber, a mix of digital and print, those kind of things? So um while council tries to support them, all of our decisions are still data driven, based on the return on in that investment. Um, I'm pleased to say though that our local spend um is trending back to spend that. So this year alone, I think we spent forty seven thousand dollars in print. Um, you know, last year, given how new they all were in local print, it was only about fifteen K, um, and about fifty thousand dollars in print with News Corp at the time. Um, there's also legislative requirements, or has been over time, of where we have to put tenders in print and that kind of thing. So it's great that we've got their local options now, and we're starting to see that spend swing. I think what's also important to note in the mix is our Facebook spend um is actually down a lot year on year. And that's um somewhat due to a different mix in how we're promoting our destination brand with the um establishment of the city events annual plan. That's been really instrumental in driving lead gen for our destination businesses, which means we don't have to spend as much. The other thing is we've worked really hard um with the media team to really um grow our own channels. So, you know, our following on Facebook ICC for Ipswich festivals for destination is really strong. So we're able to target um our subscriber bases in those quite directly without spending a lot.
And I can see in the report that quite a bit is being spent supporting, um, I guess, our activities in the art gallery, the Ipswich festivals.
Yes.
Libraries, the civic centre, Nicola Street precinct, activities as well as community engagement consultation.
Correct.
Like curbside collection.
That's right.
Disaster management and employer recruitment, so on.
Yeah, so it is very broad.
Yep. So one thing I do get asked by um owners of the, the new papers is they're always wanting council to spend more money with them.
Yes.
Obviously I refer them to the organisation because that's an operational matter. But I guess I'm wanting to some, some assurance that you're, you're working closely uh with them to, to sup, to support them and using data.
Yeah, and, and I think um the investment is indicative of them finding their feet and building their, their readership basis, which helps us. We, you know, we want to use where we can, um, our local publications and media outlets. Um, obviously for radio locally, that's been here for a number of years now, thirty years or so. So um they've got a really strong audience, so good data to work with. Um, and we partner with them on lots of council initiatives, which is great. And we're starting to see that in the local print publications as well. Um, you know, they've changed their distribution, their footprints a bit. They're starting to nut out quite unique readerships, which is, is really important for us.
Okay, okay, thank you. Are there any other questions of Miss Gregory? Yes, councillor Tully?
I just wanted to clarify a couple of things, and you've touched on it, with, in relation to the three elements. But firstly, Facebook, the, the proposed increase is from a hundred and fifty thousand to two thirty thousand a year?
So I understand, I'll defer to procurement if I'm correct, but it's not a, it's not a contract, it's just an annual, it's an annual spend. And I believe that's averaged over three year use in procurement. So that's an average over the last three years spent that they're promoting.
I, I've got a second question in relation to that, to that element.
Yeah.
It, it is proposed to go from a hundred and fifty to two thirty, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah.
But there's no, we're not contracted to spend that amount.
Okay, so, and that's what I wanted to clarify. Um, so, so we can use any part of that? If we only used half of that, we're, we're not up for a higher rate?
No, that, that's, no, not at all, that's right. The rate is the rate with Facebook, um, you're not on a contracted rate, correct?
And Seek.
Yes.
Yeah, so do they give us a favourable rate, not like for, for contract?
Facebook and Google do not. Seek, I believe, I understand, it's not my area of expertise, but that you can have an account and there might be deals based on what you spend or how, how regularly you advertise.
This is really a, a budget type decision about how much we might spend rather than being locked into a particular.
Correct.
Spend over three years, because that's a fair bit that's been indicated, one point zero three five million dollars.
It is significant. We're bringing it to council because we can't follow the standard procurement and get multiple quotes because they are sole suppliers in this space. So bringing it to council is to make it transparent, to explain that we can't go to Facebook and find two competitors and, you know, guarantee value for money. So that's why we're bringing it here.
Okay, but, but it's, it's more like a casual rate, is it?
Yes.
You, 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 you pay for what you use.
Yes.
Okay.
And it should be noted with all of our media, whether they're local, we, we don't at the moment have contracted agreements with any of those media.
Okay, so um, so whether you use a core, just, just to get this clear, you use a ten percent of what we're nominating or fifty percent or whatever, it's still the same rate?
That's right. And, and the way that especially Facebook would work or a Google campaign is you might plan to spend, you know, I'm making it up, a thousand dollars, and we might get the outcome that we require for council, whether that's, you know, tickets to a civic centre show or workshops full or whatever the outcome is after spending two hundred and seventy dollars, and we can cease that campaign at the time.
No, that's fine.
So we're optimising it all the time to get the best outcome.
No, I understand, thank you.
Thank you, any other questions of Miss Gregory? Yes, yes, deputy mayor?
Thank you, uh, just the, uh, the two thousand and twenty one, the figure of one, was that seen as, as inadequate? Um, Miss Gregory, is we're going forward with around the two thirty K currently?
Uh, I don't think it's inadequate, I think it's um reflective of what we needed to spend at that, in that financial year. Um, so that was really reflective, I believe, of a reduction in the destination campaign spend that we had done the year prior. Um, and that was really on the back of bringing Ipswich festivals events in and seeing some really strong lead gen from those, so not having to spend so much on our destination campaigns.
Okay. Um, and then just the average of the last three years, including nineteen, twenty and twenty one, um, is around the two oh six K, assuming those figures are also G S D exclusive. Um, so yeah, just really questioning the, the two thirty K, um, plus G S D moving forward.
I will defer to procurement, but I believe they're exclusive.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, deputy. Any other questions of Miss Gregory? Hi, thank you very much. I move recommendations A through to D as listed. Do I have a second there for that? Thank you, councillor Pecna. Now, I know I'm moving to discussion, I just the point, the fact that uh, how normally this money is spent is usually an operational matter, but this is coming to us because it's a, a sole source, it's not going out to market to, to get the best of the, the quotes. I think Miss Gregory's been quite, has explained that well. Any other discussion? Yes, deputy mayor?
Sorry, um, just in relation to the, the two thirty K for Facebook, um, I really just want to reiterate that, you know, that our role as a council um covers a lot of things. Um, and, and given um our budget positions moving forward and looking at our figures, figures as we build our two thousand and twenty two, twenty three budget, um, I just want to be a little bit responsible for our spend overall. I understand that our, our waste services, um, and the advertising does increase revenue, so that's a given, and I'm supportive of that. And I understand, um, uh, Google searches and Seek ads for employment because, you know, we are struggling with stuff as is the globe. Um, but I do, I do question, um, the lead to maybe on the two thirty annually Facebook ads, uh, given that if people are Facebook, they are paid, they are looking for the, um, for the services or to know what's going on. It's usually a good algorithm that will find them instead. And so I'm, I'm thinking that, uh, advertising for, for different things is a better spend within, I'll make this an out printed advertising. So I'm not completely comfortable with raising that from what we did with it.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Any other discussion points? No, I'll put the matter to the vote, A through to D. Those in favour, please raise your hand. In the room, it's unanimous, deputy mayor?
I will vote against, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So it's carried and. No, I just wanted to. We'll move on to item, the next item, sixteen point.
Mayor, could I, uh, suspend standing orders at the moment? I have to go for a personal reason.
Yeah, sure, do you want an adjournment or?
I actually wanted to, um, put a question on notice, uh, at the, to the floor. Can I do it now before I leave?
Oh, you're le, you're leaving the meeting completely?
Yeah, I've got a family issue.
Okay, so you'd like to do a, the questions on notice is item number eighteen?
Yes. Can, can I go ahead?
So you're wanting to.
Yeah, she's moved to suspend.
Yes, yep. So could you just read it out for the suspending?
Oh, I, I just ask if I can suspend standing orders, um, because I have to leave.
Although you wish to move, uh, you wish to move eighteen.
Oh, so I can ask, um, the questions on notice out of sequence.
Yes. So those in favour, raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room, um, deputy mayor?
I voted favour.
Thank you, please go ahead, councillor Ireland?
Um, I would like a report to come back to council on the Georgie Conway Pool. The report says that we're going to heat a twelve metre pool, but I'm not aware that we have a twelve metre pool out there. So could we get some plans or find out whether it'd be cheaper to do the twenty five metre pool, which already has a disability ramp in it to heat that and cover it in, than build a new pool? And where would the new pool go? That, that's my question.
Thank you. Any clarification, see here? Good, thank you. Do you have another one?
No, that's.
That's it, okay.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.
Um, then we'll, um, we'll move to back into standing orders, you know, we'll resume meeting procedures. Uh, I'll move that, those in favour. It's unanimous in the room, deputy mayor?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Lovely, so we're back to now to sixteen point seven, which is the procurement of the Rosewood Showgrounds camping facility. This is a report concerning the procurement and recommendation of a trustee lessee to manage and operate the Rosewood Showground camp facility, um, located at one railway street in Rosewood. Um, the recommendation is that council, council enter a trustee lease with the Lions Club of Rosewood. And there are five recommendations there. I won't read them all out. Would anyone like to speak to a relevant council officer on this item? Yes, councillor, yes? On what aspect of it, so I know what you call finance or procurement?
Just in relation to the um paragraph B two about the um, uh, no option for an extension.
So I guess it's a procurement question or?
Oh, page one of the report, page one eighty nine.
Yes, B two. Yes, B two. Thank you, may I say your, your name and your job title, please?
Carrie Parrott, acting property manager.
Thank you, Ms Parrott, I think councillor Tully had a question for you.
Yeah, thank you, just in relation to B two, it says about the term in the rent. And it says for a term of five years with no option for an extension, is there any legal or contractual or imperative issue that prevents a, an option for an extension at the end of the five?
Yes, this is reserved land owned by the state. So, um, under the Land Act, the state does not allow options to renew.
Okay, could, could you, could you have an option to negotiate? I can understand where the, the lessee can't just automatically renew it under an option. But I, I thought it was possible to, at our election, and this might be wrong now, but at our election, to, to, to have a possible option. The, the reason for the question, of course, is five years will come around pretty quickly. And I guess they might be willing to have an extension. But what, what you're really saying in that, I take it, i- is that we've got to go through the, the process fully again.
Yes. We, the state won't allow options, we can negotiate. We could have negotiated a longer term, but this did go to a tendering process and it went for five years.
Well, whether it was seven years, you're, you're back to the same issue after whatever period.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms Parrott. I recommend, I move recommendations A through to E as listed. Do I have a second for that, councillor Owen? Thank you, any discussion on? Councillor Quinsey?
Thank you, ma'am, as a division for council, I support the burning of the list for the Lions Club of Rosewood. They've managed this part quite successfully and we're having to see them continue. We also support the, I'm sorry, I also support the improved governance arrangements and the transparency that goes along with that. I think a well-run facility gives benefits to tourism and supports local businesses when people visit. And a good experience may surprise them, it becomes a destination for some people. And given Rosewood Lions' reputation and their application of funds to community, local community and international projects, I support the motion for that.
Thank you, councillor Quinsey. Would anyone else like to speak to it? No, I'll put recommendations A through to E to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room, deputy mayor?
It's aye.
Thank you very much, it's carried. Which is sixteen point eight, which is the sub-region Waste Alliance Stage Two tender approval. And there were two recommendations here in regards to the next step. Thank you, I have some questions that do, are about, that are commercial in confidence. So I move that in accordance with section two, five, four, J, three. G, negotiations relating to a commercial matter involving the local government for which a public discussion would be likely to prejudice the interest of the local government, of the Local Government Regulation twenty twelve. The meeting move into closed session to discuss the sub-region Waste Alliance Stage Two tender approval. Do I have a second for that motion, thank you councillor Fekner. I'll put that to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you councillor, thank you, it's unanimous in the room, and deputy mayor?
It's aye.
Thank you, please let me know when we're moved into closed session.
Thank you, it's torn by night, we've just come out of the closed session. Just to let people know that during that closed session, we were adjourned from eleven forty two to eleven fifty two. So we're back here with recommendations A and B five sixteen, I said A through to D for sixteen point eight, which is the sub-aging wasteland lines. I will move recommendations A through to D, do I have a second up for that from the Council of Fictin? I'll leave it open for any discussion. There being no discussion, recommendations A through to D, to the vote, those in favour please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room, Deputy Mayor?
In favor.
Thank you very much, it's unanimous and carried. Move on to item sixteen point nine, which is the monthly financial performance report for both November and December. And the recommendations of the reports on council's financial performance for the periods ending thirty for December, I say thirty for November and thirty first of December twenty twenty one, submitted in accordance with section two O four of the London Government Regulations twenty twelve, be considered and made by council. I'll move that, do I have a second up for that, thank you Council of Fictin? In discussion, I'd just like to say, thank you for the report, I think it was a really well reported in CFO. And thank you for being upfront where some of the delays and how the realisation is managing the hours and numbers. Any other discussion or questions for anyone? I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room, Deputy Mayor?
In favor.
Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. We're now on to item sixteen point ten, the Infrastructure and Environment Department capital delivery report for November twenty twenty one. And the recommendation of the report we received and contents noted, I'll move that, is there a second up?
My apologies, I've just realised my microphone has been turned off, I apologise for that. Has it been, how long's it been, the whole time?
I think so.
Okay. Okay, just to move for sixteen point eight, that I moved Council Fictin seconded and it was passed unanimously. Sixteen point nine, I moved Council Fictin seconded and it was moved unanimously. And on sixteen point ten, I moved and Council Fictin seconded it, thank you. We now move on to... For, sorry? Yeah, haven't done that yet, we're going to move to, yes, I'll move on to any discussion on this. I guess I note the table on page two seven eight, which is the Infrastructure and Environment Department capital portfolio spend. Really delighted to see that graph, to see more consistent spending programme and more delivery programme, rather than doing what often governments do and that massive spend in May-June. So it's a fantastic way of managing that, thank you, Mr Madigan.
And thank you too, I'd like to highlight too, that the last couple of months, we've been having a report to attachment one on the, an update report, which has pictures on our major projects. So I really encourage residents to have a look at the major projects that were underway. There's great pictures and a really good summary and look forward to any conversations from residents on it. Is there any other discussion or questions on sixteen ten? No, in that case I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour please raise your hand. It's unanimous, sorry, I'll go and check with Deputy Mayor.
In favour.
In favour, so it's unanimous and carried. Thank you very much. We dealt with items sixteen point eleven and sixteen point twelve previously. Seventeen, do we have any notices of motion? There are none. We dealt with eighteen, with questions on notice, does anyone else have any questions on notice? In that case, I will close the meeting at twelve thirteen PM, thank you very much.